This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the February 1st, 2023 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. At this time, I would ask you all to please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I'd like to ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public and virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor. This is opportunity for anyone either here in person or online to approach the board for any non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who had any comment this evening? Any online? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of our township meeting minutes. Our July 18th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting minutes have been distributed to the board for your review. Is there any discussion? May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. Moving on to presentations. We have citing a couple of presentations this morning, this evening. Our first is a resolution appointing Stephen Brown to the position of Captain for South Whitehall Township, and I will ask our Township Chief of Police, Glenn Dorni, to please present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. We're here tonight for a special evening to celebrate the promotion of two of our officers, first one being soon-to-be Captain Stephen Brown. Steve was sworn in as a police officer on February 8th, 2007. He's a 2001 graduate of Parkland High School. He served in the United States Navy from July of 2001 until 2005, being honorably discharged as a Master-at-Arms Second Class. He's a graduate of the Allentown Police Academy's 80th class. In May of 2020, he graduated magna cum laude from the Pennsylvania State University with a bachelor's degree in law and society and a minor in criminal justice. Captain Brown has served the department as an IPIMBA certified bike officer. He has been the coordinator of Community Relations Section since 2009, conducting meetings of the township's crime watch groups and attending public events representing the department. He has previously been active in the field training program since 2011, serving as both an FTO and the program coordinator. In September of 2012, he was promoted to a sergeant in the patrol division, serving as a shift supervisor. He was also assigned as a warrant control officer during this time, auditing and inspecting active arrest warrants. Additionally, he served as a bargaining unit representative from 2012 until 2018. In September of 2017, he was selected to be the Sergeant of Administration, where he assumed the duties as the professional standards officer, accreditation manager, and UCR officer in charge. In November of 2018, he was promoted to the rank of Lieutenant of Administration, where he maintained the responsibilities held as a sergeant and was assigned additional duties to include being the Clean Terminal Agency Coordinator, JNET Terminal Agency Coordinator, and Internal Affairs Investigator. As the department's accreditation manager, he successfully navigated us through our first three-year reaccreditation assessment under the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Commission in June of 2020. In April 2021, he assumed the frontline supervision of the Criminal Investigations Division. Then in August 2021, he was assigned as the second-line supervisor of both CID and the Community Relations Sections after a department reorganization, putting sergeants as supervisors of both of those sections. He also serves as a member of the Lehigh County Career and Technical Institute's Occupational Advisory Council for the Criminal Justice Program. As a lieutenant, he continued his professional development by obtaining the FBI Lita Trilogy Leadership Series in December of 2018, attending the 7th Class of the Pennsylvania State Police's Leadership Development Program in February of 2019, and graduating from the 484th Class of the Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command in December 2020. He is married to his wife, Angela, with his four daughters Savannah, Mackenzie, Avery, and Reagan, and I'm here respectfully to request a resolution be passed promoting Steve Brown to the rank of Captain.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. Is there any board discussion?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Captain Brown, I just want to say a couple of words. I remember meeting you for the first time Bike Patrol with Officer Addison, who I actually went to grade school with. You're a modest man. Your accomplishments, as reiterated by our Chief of Police, tells everyone here how modest you are, but I wanted to thank you for everything, the hard work you put into your career, for staying here in South Whitehall, and I wish you the best as captain.
Well said, Commissioner Osborne. Thank you. Any other comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. I had the opportunity of meeting Captain Brown when the Public Police Academy that I sat through, and I can't, I'd like to echo everything Chief Dorni had said. Just one other thing, you need to update your technology skills downstairs, especially when we have those classes. Congratulations.
Dave, spoken so well, I can't even top it. Congratulations, well deserved, well earned, and thank you.
I'll echo my colleague's sentiments. Congratulations, well deserved.
And I will do the same. Congratulations, Captain Brown, and thank you for your commitment and dedicated service over the years to our township. At this time, is there any public comment? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
I'll make a second. Okay, we'll give that to Commissioner Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Captain Brown.
And if we could have Captain Brown come forward, and I believe Angela, if you would like to pin his new bars on his collar without striking any arteries or any blood, please?
Moving on to Agenda Item B. We have a resolution appointing Eric Dotter to the position of Lieutenant for South Whitehall Township, and Chief Dorni, if you'd please present.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we're here for the promotion for Lieutenant Eric Dotter. He is a graduate of Parkland High School in 2005. He also attended Penn State University. I'm very proud of that as a Penn State grad myself, so both of these promotions are from Penn State. He graduated there in 2009 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He graduated the Allentown Police Academy in 2010 and was hired by the South Whitehall Township Police Department in May of 2012. Eric is a member of the Lehigh County Municipal Emergency Response Team ever since 2014 and currently serves as a team leader. Lieutenant Dotter is a firearms instructor, TASER instructor, less lethal instructor, certified bike officer, and project lifesaver coordinator. Eric was promoted to the rank of sergeant in September of 2019, and I believe his wife, Emily, and two children, Peyton, seven, and Andrew, six, are here tonight to celebrate this night, so I am respectfully requesting a resolution for the promotion of Lieutenant Eric Dotter.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. Any board comment before we go to a vote?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Lieutenant Dotter, I just wanted to let you know that you're known in the community as someone who is helpful, goes out of their way, your way, to help people in the community, which included my wife in one incident, so, an accident. So I just wanted to thank you and congratulate you for this promotion.
Congratulations, Lieutenant.
Congratulations, well earned. Stay safe.
Congrats, Lieutenant, and thank you for all your due to keep our community safe. Appreciate it.
I'll echo my fellow commissioners. Again, congratulations, Lieutenant Dotter, and thank you for keeping our community safe and for your dedication to our community. Thank you. Any public comment before we take a vote? Hey, do we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Lieutenant, would you come forward to get pinned? And Emily, would you like to do the duty, or do you want Eno to do it? No?
Okay, moving on to our ordinances. Agenda Item 7. We have a hearing followed by motion to adopt said ordinance and ordinance amending the South Whitehall Township zoning ordinance by deleting Sections 350-48N2, no-impact home-based business, creating new Sections 350-48H5, home-based business, no-impact, and 350-48H4, home-based business, low-impact, renumbering existing Sections 350-48N3, nursing home, to Section 350-48N2, renumbering existing Sections 350-48H4 through H6 to 350-48H6 through H8 to accommodate the new Sections 350-48H4 and HS, correct all impacted links within the zoning ordinance, and providing for a severability clause, retention of rights-to-enforce clause, a repealer clause, and an effective date. And I will turn this over to our township manager.
Thank you. So, under the municipality's planning code, a public hearing must occur. So with that, I will turn it over to the township solicitor to run the public hearing.
Thank you, President Kelly, and Township Manager Petrucci. Under the municipality's planning code, the purpose of a public hearing for a zoning ordinance amendment is to inform the public and to have an opportunity for the public to make comment. So the procedure will be, I'll go through some of the preliminary requirements. There'll then be an opportunity for questions from the Board of Commissioners. There'll be an opportunity for public comment, and if the board so chooses at the closing of the public hearing, the opportunity to vote on this if the board wishes to do so. I would just note preliminarily that this particular draft ordinance has its roots back as far as the spring of 2021, and it has gone through all the necessary procedural requirements under the municipality's planning code, so it has been referred to the Township Planning Commission. It's been referred to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. The time limits for those have been met. It's been published in a newspaper of general circulation. The hearing has been so advertised, and there's been a copy of the text provided to the newspaper as required by the code, and it's also been provided to the county law library. So with all those preliminaries that have been fulfilled, next thing is to inform the public, and for that part of it, I turn it over, Mr. Petrucci.
Thank you. So basically, the staff planning department had prepared a draft zoning ordinance amendment review memorandum. So I don't know if it would be more appropriate for, Greg, if you would like to review your memorandum?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. This is, I believe this is your one, two, three, third time in the past six months to have a look at this ordinance. I probably don't have to go through the background on it because you've seen it a number of times. This is basically to do two things. It is to update the no-impact home-based business section of our ordinance to be more consistent with the Pennsylvania Municipality's Planning Code, and to create a low-impact home-based business, which allows a few more items in residential areas than the no-impact does, but those items would be subject to special exception review by the zoning hearing board. And you've seen those. You recommended them for advertisement and delivery to the LVPC. The LVPC subsequently reviewed them. We've gotten some good review back from them. I don't believe they wanted any changes, so it is now before you in its final state or ready for adoption.
I would add at this point, just looking at the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission review letter, it says, and I quote, "This proposal aligns with the intent of the future LV, the regional plan, to continue diversification of the regional economy by allowing home-based businesses that have no or low impact. These uses support modern workforce needs through increased flexibility and economic opportunities." And then the LVPC goes on to say later in the letter, "The LVPC commends the township." But with that said, at this point, does any member of the Board of Commissioners have any questions or comments regarding this proposed ordinance?
Thank you, Solicitor. I just had one question. It was advertised in the local newspaper. Did the township receive any feedback from anyone in the community or outside of the community with any questions or concerns?
No, we did not receive any feedback or comments.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Solicitor Zader. So this would be a question probably for Greg. Are there any applications in the queue right now received by the township which may be affected by this particular amendment?
Excuse me. None at this moment. We've had questions from one individual, and I believe she will probably be making an application by the deadline for the March zoning hearing board meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to say I'm happy to hear that because I wouldn't want an action by the board, you know, to intervene in something that's already in-house, but so thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments from the Board of Commissioners?
My only comment, Joe, is the fact that I think we've seen this, as Greg said several times, we've discussed it, and it's an appropriate action that we take.
I would agree, and my only question would be, as we move forward now with a new ordinance that will have an impact on our residents who may have a low-impact or no-impact home business, if there is feedback from the community once this process begins to play itself out, would you please report back to the board so we would be aware if there was anything that we needed to be aware of or changes we might need?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
I would just concur with Commissioner Kelly on that. Obviously, since the pandemic, the nature of no-impact or low-impact home-based businesses is changing, so if there are any changes down the line or issues that residents run into or barriers that they run into to successfully operating their low-impact home-based businesses, that you just let us know and can address those issues if they come up.
I will do that.
Thank you.
I'm happy this is going forward. It's, we've spent a lot of time on this and done a lot of work on it, so thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this proposed ordinance? Seeing no hands and hearing no voices, I will close this public hearing, and should the board wish to proceed with a vote or consideration for a vote, you're able to do that.
Thank you, Solicitor Zader.
You're welcome.
At this time, do I hear a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. And Greg, thank you, and staff, all staff who worked over these months and actually a couple of years to bring this to us, and I hope it serves our community well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Ordinance 7B. For direction and discussion, followed by a motion to send to the LVPC and Township Solicitor's Office for review and comments, a special exception uses zoning ordinance amendment, and I will ask our township manager again to present.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So this ordinance is before you, due to the fact that staff, specifically community development staff, has noticed that there's no method of providing input to the zoning hearing board for special exception uses for engineering reviews and planning commission insight. So basically, the zoning hearing board's mandate with respect to special exception uses is to attach reasonable conditions and safeguards to said uses. A special exception use is basically presumed to be permitted, however, the zoning hearing board has the right to attach conditions. In order to aid the zoning hearing board, we feel it's necessary for said uses to go through the planning commission process whereby a site plan would be reviewed, review letters would be generated by the township engineer and by township staff, and that would give the zoning hearing board that level of insight in order to attach conditions that more accurately reflect the use that's being proposed. Staff researched the fact that there are multiple municipalities in the surrounding area that have already utilized this type of ordinance. South Whitehall has not traditionally had this ordinance in place, hence that's why we're coming to you. So we first looked at this at the October 5th, 2022 meeting, and the Board of Commissioners asked staff to move forward with the proposed zoning ordinance amendment. At the December 15th, 2022 meeting, the Planning Commission made a number of comments to the proposed amendment, and the version of it was revised in order to incorporate those comments and as well as to ensure consistency with the MPC. So at this stage of the ordinance, we feel it's ready for it to go to both the Solicitor as well as to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission for review and comment. So that is the motion that we would seek at this time.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any board discussion?
I do have a quick question. Quick question. I'm looking at page 12 of 23, letter E, Roman numeral 3. No, actually 2, I'm sorry, about owners that are situated within 300 feet of the proposed site. They will be notified by mail. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And that is current standard.
Any other board discussion at this time?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. So I'll make a comment or ask a question similar to one that I've asked before, but I'll start with asking Solicitor Zader. Solicitor Zader, have you had a chance to review this particular proposed ordinance?
I have not. In fact, I believe one of the things that Mr. Petrucci mentioned is part of the motion tonight is to send it to my office for review.
Correct.
I'm aware of conceptually that this is advancing, obviously, but I've not reviewed it yet.
Okay, thank you. So being consistent with a point that I brought up previously, Tom, was it your intention to actually have the Solicitor's Office review this before sending it to the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission?
We discussed that as an option, but we feel we can do this concurrently, that if the LVPC doesn't have substantive comments, that we can move forward and then have it come back to the board for a motion to proceed with advertising. However, that being said, if there's substantive comments from either the Solicitor or LVPC, we will have to resend it back to the LVPC if we make those changes, per the requirements of the MPC.
Okay, actually, this all proceeds advertising, then?
Yes.
Got it. Okay. That's what I was, thank you. That's what I was trying to-
The hope and the intent and the expectation is that there's not going to be any substantive comments from either, and that we'll be able to move forward. But of course, there's always the chance that we'll have it, and then we'll come back to the board.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other board comment? Anything from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to proceed with said action?
So moved.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. Agenda Item 8A. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township to adopt a formal policy entitled "South Whitehall Township Appointment Policy for Appointed Citizen Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Councils." I will again ask our township manager to present.
Thank you. I would like to provide an executive summary of the key provisions of the policy, noting that the board has reviewed this twice, and the comments were taken under advisement and incorporated into the policy. So before asking for a motion for adoption, I'll go through what this policy accomplishes. First, it provides for maintaining a database of current members of appointed citizen boards. It provides for maintaining a database of applicants to citizen boards. It establishes a notification process for expiring and/or vacant citizen board positions on an annual basis. Establishes that all expiring and/or vacant citizen board positions will be advertised for notice of availability in order to promote the principle of inclusion and afford opportunities to other potential applicants. Clarifies that incumbent members of citizen boards will be required to interview before the Board of Commissioners. Confirms that all interviews of applicants will be conducted during regular public meetings under the provisions of the Sunshine Law. Establishes minimum criteria for the selection, nomination, and appointment of applicants, and provides for the involvement of the township manager and/or his or her designee and chairpersons of each citizen board in the interview process. So unless there's any questions, seek a motion to adopt the policy.
Thank you, Tom. I'll open it up to the board if there's any board discussion.
Make a motion now, so, and I think it's long overdue.
I would second that. Any discussion, further discussion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item B. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the acceptance of real property identified as a 0.042 acre, 1,829 square feet portion of Lehigh County parcel identifier, number 547749593101-1. I will again ask our township manager to present.
Thank you. The item before you, the first item under this agenda item is the resolution to accept the 1,829 square feet portion of property which is necessary in order to proceed with the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail, which is, it's under Phase 1 of the project, which is funded by a million-dollar TASSA reimbursement grant. So myself and- So myself and Director of Operations Herb Bender has met with the property owner for at least two onsite meetings. The owner is Mr. Daniel Pucker. Mr. Pucker has agreed to dedicate the necessary right-of-way to the township to facilitate the Jordan Creek Greenway Trail to connect to River Road, for which we are very thankful that Mr. Pucker is willing to work with the township. And just to note, the original plan was to utilize Jersey barriers. We did review a more aesthetic option with Mr. Pucker, and we used the State Route 202 Parkway Trail as a model for the more aesthetic option. So basically, at this time, we are seeking a motion to allow for this dedication, and later in the meeting, there's another separate portion of this that will complete the requirements for River Road, for the TASSA grant-funded portion of the Greenway, but at this time, I'm just seeking for the authorization of the right-of-way dedication.
Thank you, Tom, and I'll echo your sentiment. I do appreciate Mr. Pucker's cooperation with the township to allow this project to move forward, and thank you both to you and Herb Bender for investigating and finding that beautiful wall that will be a much-welcome site down there, as opposed to a Jersey barrier that'd be very fitting with the Greenway and the nature, you know, the nature that we have there, so thank you very much for your dedication and work there.
You're welcome.
Open up to the board if there's any questions at this time.
Thank you, Tom and Herb. Cosmetically, it looks really nice. What a, wow, what a difference. So thank you for looking into that and finding this, that we could model it after. I think the stonework will really complement the bridge and the stonework of the covered bridge, the side structures, I think it'll look really nice. So this was not my first hope, I really was hoping to get everybody off that road, but this is something that I can compromise and live with, so thank you.
Any other board comment? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
I'll make that second. I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to resolution C, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, authorizing the delivery of real estate tax duplicates pursuant to Section 1712 of the First Class Township Code, on our township manager.
Thank you. Yes, so Section 1712 of the First Class Township Code states that the Board of Commissioners shall, within 30 days after adoption of the budget, or within 30 days after receipt of the assessment roll from the county, whichever is later, deliver a duplicate of the assessment of township taxes to the township tax collector, together with the board's warrant for collection of the taxes. So we, as a township, must comply with that requirement. The resolution for your consideration of approval authorizes the township manager, finance director, and/or township secretary to take the necessary actions to complete this requirement. I would like to note, the township has historically always taken this requirement, this just memorializes the action, but it basically just ensures that the process is followed each year.
Excellent, thank you, I appreciate you lining that up so that it will be done annually, Tom, thank you. Any more discussion on this resolution? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to resolution D, we have a resolution amending resolution number 2023-01 Designating Depositories for Township Funds. I'll call on our Director of Finance, Tricia Dicker, to present, or, I'm sorry, I think Tom will handle that. I have the wrong notes here.
Yeah, so again, this is, you've already reproved the depositories for this year, however, our auditor has asked that the township assign the township secretary or director of finance the duty of opening and closing escrow accounts where applicable. So basically, we just needed to add that language to ensure compliance with the request of our auditor.
Excellent, very good. Any more discussion on this resolution?
I see Commissioner Hodges is responsible for signing this. Do I have that right?
Yes, the way we have that is, I'm not sure why the, I think it's, do we, okay, great, because Commissioner Kelly is an authorized signer, yeah.
Right. Good luck, Commissioner Hodges.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Make a motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to agenda item nine, motions. 9A, we have a motion to confirm the township engineer as the project design consultant for Vista's Park Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCNR, C2P2 grant, BRC-PRD-26-269 Development. And I'll ask Tom to present again.
Thank you, thank you. So for the reference grant through DCNR for the Vista's Park project, the township was contacted by the conservation advisor, Richard Bogart, who handles this grant, and he's, he basically indicated that the township needs to confirm its selection of the design consultant for the grant so that the township can then schedule the required initial conference call with DCNR. From there, all of the project activities can occur. Due to the fact this grant has an expiration date of 12/31/24, time is of the essence. So I did speak to Mr. Bogart to confirm the scope of this project, and I wanted to review that with the board. The scope of work is as follows: construction of a pickleball court, pedestrian walkways, nature play areas, fencing shade structures, ADA access, project sign and related site improvements. So the township must complete all of those identified items, and there's some flexibility in terms of how we complete it, and that's where the township engineer will work with us. Before we can get to those discussions and get to the point of DCNR approving our plan, we have to select our design consultant, which is Pickcock Engineering Township Engineer. I just want to quickly highlight some key points of the project design. The township must comply with all ADA requirements, so anything that is funded by DCNR money must be ADA compliant. So for example, if you provide a nature play area, you must provide an ADA-compliant accessible route to said nature play area, and the nature play area itself must be ADA compliant. The DCNR project advisor, Mr. Bogart, must approve the design specifications before it can go out to competitive bid. The township may appoint the township engineer or any other professional service without going through the RFP process for a development project. So assuming the board confirms that selection, we will then have to notify Mr. Bogart. And basically, that is, that is what I wanted to review with the board with respect to the selection of the project design consultant. With respect to the project overall, it's important to note that if technically feasible, we should try to limit the MPDS permit requirement. If we can stay under an acre of disturbance, we will need to modify the planned layout to eliminate and/or modify the placement of the features in the southern portion of the existing park, potentially, in order to achieve ADA compliance. There are a number of challenges relative to the existing topography and landscape features of the park, so we will need to work with Pickcock to accomplish the following: increased parking, provide all identified scope of work items, achieve ADA compliance, and update the board on any revised drawings or maps prior to sending to DCNR for final approval. The budget line item is an existing purchase order that's already been encumbered, so the amount was $77,000, of that amount, $49,000 and change remains, with a total of just over $27,000 in costs incurred to date. So we will be on track, as confirmed by Tony Talarida from Pickcock, to stay within that PO limitations.
Very good, Tom, thank you. At this point, we're just confirming...
Yes, the motion would be to confirm the township engineer as the project design consultant for Vista's Park for the DCNR C2P2 grant.
And the one comment in the review letter that you just read, Rick Bogart did note that pickleball courts are excessively known to make loud noises and to ensure their relationship to occupied homes, and so that's something that the township will be working with the engineer to assure that we're...
Yes, we've already looked at some solutions to that problem.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
Any more discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve with said motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item B, we have a motion to authorize township manager to execute Michael Baker International Proposal in the amount of $56,240 for engineering and permitting for River Road relocation project. And Tom?
Thank you. So this is the second part of the River Road project to realign, or I'm sorry, to widen the road that I had mentioned. So basically, Michael Baker is the engineer of record for the TASSA grant for Phase 1 of the Jordan Creek Greenway project. So while this River Road portion is not considered as part of the PennDOT TASSA grant, it's considered a local township project. Basically, we would like, the recommendation from staff is to keep the work with Michael Baker so to ensure that there are no inconsistencies between this project and the TASSA grant. So basically, we just want to ensure that we do not run into any issues when we go to seek reimbursement for the million-dollar TASSA grant. So basically, I'm seeking the motion to execute the professional agreement with Michael Baker to proceed with the work.
Very good, Tom, thank you. Any more discussion on this motion?
Tom, I have a quick question. Is the $56,000 just for the River Road relocation?
Yes, it is.
Was that negotiated, by any chance?
That is, yes, that is actually lower than what was originally submitted. Not by a significant amount, but we were able to take some amount off.
Offhand, how much that was?
It was about $22,000 off.
So not even negligible? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second? We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one. Moving on to agenda item C, we have a motion to authorize township manager to execute Michael Baker International Proposal in the amount of $11,591.84 for the Jordan Creek Greenway Project Design and Engineering Services, Supplement Number 5, Phase 2 Amendment for Additional Archaeological Services. Tom, if you would present.
Yes, thank you. So I think it's necessary for me to explain why this is necessary. So during the scope of Phase 2, which is not the construction portion of the Greenway at this point, it's basically just engineering and design and construction drawings, it was identified that there could be some sensitive areas that need to be remediated in accordance with state regulations to ensure that we are not impacting any culturally significant artifacts. So basically, at this point, this Phase 2 report will then document and preserve and curate those artifacts, and then the report is sent to the state, to the Pennsylvania Historical Commission, in order to ensure that we are meeting all those requirements and that we are not impacting any portion of the area of the project. So in order for the Jordan Creek Greenway project to go forward for Phase 2, for the design, we do need to go forward with this proposal. I did, myself and Herb did a lot of research, and as well as Chris Stroller, into the status of this grant, I'm sorry, the status of the overall grant, as well as the Greenway project itself. So Phase 1 is Weir Mill Road to Lap Road, that's the TASSA grant for construction. Phase 2 is Lap Road to Cedar Crest Boulevard. Basically, that's just the DCNR design grant for Jordan, for segments 35 to 45. Michael Baker's the township design consultant for Phase 1 and Phase 2. The contract was originally for $119,570. That PO was closed, a change order was issued in the amount of $25,162. That PO is also now closed. The original approved purchase order for Phase 2 was $133,000 and change. There was a supplement of just over $1,000 added, and then the Board of Commissioners also approved an additional, almost just over $35,000, for the existing open purchase order. So thereby, the total approved purchase order amount is $169,877. The supplement number two was signed in March of 2022 for the amount of $133,373. So right now, we have a total of a PO that we can utilize of $169,877. Current liquidated amount of the PO is $13,694.02. There's one pending invoicing, the amount of $8,622.77, thereby giving the township a balance of $147,560.21 of encumbered funds available for this project in '23. $81,591.84 is anticipated to be needed in total for '23. So basically, we have enough of a remaining balance of $65,968.37 at the conclusion of the 2023 fiscal year. That will still leave an additional amount of just over $42,000 needed for Phase 1 and Phase 2. If we use the PO for River Road under this PO, that means we will need to budget in '24 for additional funds in order to complete the rest of this work. I just want the board to be aware of that, that we might have to incorporate some additional funds for '24. Basically, to sum this up, you have the money now, we can go forward with this project, you don't need to transfer any funds this year, but I strongly caution the board, or just give you an overview that next year, we'll have to budget more funds, most likely.
Thank you, Tom. The funding we're all, we're reviewing, everything that you just reviewed and read, the different invoices, that has all been grant money to this point?
No. So the way the DCNR grant, it's a 50-50 match, so the grant was $300,000, well, I'm sorry, the total was $300,000, the grant was $150,000. So you have to match it with $150,000.
So at the end of the day, when all of this is done, we will be within the $300,000 total?
Yes, that was the point of all this back research, which was very time-consuming.
It looks...
But it was necessary to ensure that we are not going to have a budgetary issue this year, and I don't believe we are, but next year is not as certain.
And one other question, so we've got Phase 1 and Phase 2, both moving forward at the same time, is there a way to give the board at some point a glimpse of where we are, where the start of where we are now, and what are we looking at moving forward?
Yes, we viewed this as a two-tiered process. The first was to get you up to speed on the financial aspect. The second is currently CD with Chris Stroller and Dave, they're working on providing you an update on the construction and design portions of the project, so we hope to have that to you within the next month or so.
Very good, I think that'll be very helpful.
Yeah, that way, you're completely up to speed on the project from the financial end, as well as the connectivity and construction and design goals, and acquisition as well.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. Are there any other board questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. This was a little bit difficult for me to digest, there was a lot of language in there and requirements, but for me, I'll boil it down to one question: who determines what an artifact is? Who determines what an artifact is?
Certified professionals.
So a certified professional will be part of the excavating crew or that, or that, contractor will have a person?
Yes, so, so we will, this is, before we even get to the construction phase.
Right.
This expert will determine what level of impact there is, if any. And then that will be documented and sent to the state for their clearance.
So will this person be part of the contractor team or a person that must work with that?
So, so that's an excellent question. So if this AD marble professional consultant determines that there's no future mitigation required, then the answer is no, they won't be on site during the construction. If, however, they determine it is culturally significant, then you, you might have to take additional steps, which will be determined by the state, which could include additional measures during construction. And Dave, did I, did I indicate that properly?
Yeah, it's really, so the, during the Phase One, they'd go out and do some site investigation. They found something that might, that warrants further investigation from the state, and the state needs to sign off on whatever that was found. So indicating that they can't, you can't move forward until the state signs off that it's okay. And that's really what this next process is.
And we need the certified professional to do that.
Yes.
To document it, to archive it, and to, to package a report to the state.
Commissioner Osborne, I just observed in response to your question, this is not something that's unique to this project or unique to even the grant process. Developers very often have to go through this process in connection with a project, and getting clearance from PHMC, the Pennsylvania Historical Museum Commission, is not an uncommon thing. And the number of consultants out there who do this kind of work is fairly limited.
Thank you.
Did the township, did we take the same path, the first section of the Greenway that is already completed? Do we have, did we have a similar?
Yes.
We did.
Yes, for whatever reason, this, this, this was not included in the scope of work with Michael Baker. Again, you're asking a great question. Knowing that it was known the first time, maybe it could have been or should have been, it just wasn't, I don't have an answer for that. But we, we now have, we've confirmed we have the money to, to proceed with it. But like I said, if these types of change orders keep happening and we have all these costs, I, I foresee with a very high level of certainty, we're going to have to ask for additional funding next year.
You know, I guess my thought on that is this South White Hall has a very rich history. When, when you go back when it was first incorporated, and there's a lot of history that happened here, including going back to the Revolutionary War. So it's not inconceivable that during digging, we, you know, contractor may across, may come across something that has historical value. I just, I'm just intrigued, because as I'm sitting there in the back though, I'm not looking for this, you know, this relic from the Revolutionary War. But what we're saying, are we saying that there will be some oversight to that construction activity that, that will be focused on that aspect of the project?
Well, I, I think what we're trying to do is clear, get clearance before we even get to that point, so that we don't have to worry about that issue.
And, and the state is, PHMC is, are the ones that have to sign off us and tell us whether we have to go to that level or it's okay for them to just dig. So that's kind of where we're at in the process.
You know, a good, similar, a lot of times you hear developers and townships talk about the bog turtle. So this is the exact same thing. If you, you were in a potential area for a bog turtle, you have to do a Phase One to determine the scope of their habitat. If they do find habitat, then you have to do, you have to go through a Phase Two, and then you also have to do construction monitoring potentially. So the same exact, same as the exact process. It's just basically ensuring that we receive our environmental clearances, which again, if this, we ever seek federal funding or state funding like we did for Phase One, we're going to have to show that we did this for Phase Two as well. If we, if we don't do this type of work for Phase Two, then we won't be able to seek those types of grants.
So I guess a follow-up question. We're going through this step, as you mentioned, Tom, because we've come to realize that this is necessary and required. Is this because this is the township who is doing this work, or would this also apply to a private contractor?
Yes, it would apply to anyone looking to do any type of work required for this, for this project.
So Ridge Farms, the construction for that property, is this a requirement for that particular project as well?
Yes.
Yes, so pretty much the process is that PHMC has historical maps and data from different areas of the state, the county, that have potential for artifacts. Excuse me, any type of development that would happen would throw up a flag, and then you would have to do further investigation. And as Tom said, if the second flag's thrown up, there might need to be someone during construction. So it really goes through the process of what's there, what, where their maps say there are areas, and they're going to go investigate those areas. If they find additional artifacts or evidence, then again, they'll, they'll clear it. But all those steps are taken, as you mentioned, all private developers go through that step as well as making a construction project, has to get clearance.
Think about this particular location. On the one side, the other side of the township park, you've got a Revolutionary War era home, and the other side of the Puker property on Limekin Road, you have all the old lime kilns. And this is kind of sandwiched between the two, so it's not surprising it was flagged in the map.
Would it be safe to assume, asking the questions and hearing the answers, that the construction that we see on Ridge Farms, so that would be east of Cedar Crest, north of Walbert, that they, this kind of oversight is, is in place?
So they have received clearance in their MPDS permit submission to the county and to the state already, that they have investigated this area. So if there's no flags that were put up, they do not have to go through the second, third, and fourth potential steps. So before you start construction, everyone needs to at least clear the first hurdle to make sure there's nothing there. Again, if something trips into the second flag, that's when you kind of go through the next step. So everything is monitored prior to construction.
Thank you. And solicitor zater, you're, you're absolutely right. The area that we're talking about in this particular agenda item, it's rich in history. And you know, you can almost expect that there's going to be some artifact, you know, that's uncovered, that someone buried, who wanted to pass along to society whenever they passed away, and dug that ground up.
Any other board comment? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to proceed with said motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving down to agenda item 10, Correspondence and Information. I'll ask our Township Manager to review our upcoming meetings.
Thank you. There's a meeting for the, of the Pension Committee meeting, or our Pension Committee, I'm sorry, on Monday, February 6th at 9:00 AM. Monday, February 6th at 5:00 PM, there's a Special Board of Commissioners meeting to interview the candidate for alternate position on the zoning hearing board. Monday, February 6th, 7:00 PM, there's a Public Safety Commission meeting. Wednesday, February 8th, at 10:00 AM, is a Civil Service Commission meeting. Thursday, February 9th, at 7:00 PM, is a zoning hearing board special hearing. Monday, February 13th, at 7:00 PM, is Parks and Rec Board meeting. All the details of the meetings are posted on the township website.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. I just had a question for the board members, so we will hold a public meeting, special meeting on this coming Monday, the 6th, to interview a candidate for zoning hearing board, which I assume will be on the next agenda or consideration to a point.
Yes.
We do have several resumes, and we have interviewed, and there still is a vacancy on the Park and Rec Board. Does this Board of Commissioners want to also put on the agenda on the 15th to consider appointment to the Park and Rec Board with our existing candidate information?
I think we should. I think we should, why, why, why delay it? Commissioner Kelly, are you suggesting that we do that on February 6th as well?
I'm asking the Commissioner if there would be an agreement.
Yeah, in, in principle, I, I think that's a great idea. I think Tracy tried to squeeze this in between other particular meetings like Public Safety meeting, do we have enough time?
We've already interviewed them.
Well, I, I think the other question is, it was advertised just for the zoning hearing board alternate.
So not to be misunderstood, we have already done the interviews, and we've got a.
Oh, okay.
We've got information already that we need to.
I misunderstood.
Pool of applicants that we've already interviewed.
Okay, so you're not talking about February 6th, our next meeting?
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Correct me if you're wrong, Commissioner Kelly, you're, you're talking about interviews that already have been conducted for applicants that have already applied for these other positions?
For the Park and Rec vacancy specifically.
He was interviewed already.
Were we in agreement to ask our manager to place that on the agenda on the 15th? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to agenda item 11, Old Business. We have Where's Dam, and I'll ask our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to give us new update.
All right, Where's Dam? We are trying to get the Gabian's baskets on the south side of the, the stream completed. We have to wait for some dry weather. It seems like every time we're ready to start, we get rain. To a lot of us, it seems like a little bit of rain, but in the Jordan Creek, we get water from 70 miles away. So the water level comes up, we don't want to rip those out until we know, we need like three-day window, four days at the max to get those done. So we're just playing with the weather, trying to wait it out, because if we take them out too early, we can cause the banks to start eroding and that, if we would get more rain. So that's where we're at there. We do have one other issue that was brought up that they do want corrected now. We have some seepage coming around the left, the south side wing wall. I did have a meeting with the engineers already. We are going to set that up for the springtime to make that repair. We are going to use the same permit, we're not going to close it out, and Public Works will actually make that repair in-house to keep the price down significantly. The engineer will be on site that day, we have to put two water stops in while we're digging the trench out 10 feet, eight feet deep, and we are going to use the natural earth as the frame and just fill it right in. So we'll have a truck on standby there, and it should be a one-day process, and then we can get the EP to finally close this out with us.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your update, Herb. Any board comment or question from the public? Moving on to agenda item B, Comprehensive Plan Update. I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart.
So the comprehensive plan update, we are still in the public comment period. We are continuing to receive comments through the online form. The plan is to catalog all of the comments and provide a separate report, and including comments from, we did receive a comment letter from the Jerris Corp., and we've received a letter from the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission. All of the letters will be compiled, and we're, I mentioned before, we're kind of categorizing all of the comments, and we will respond to those categories generally and address things that need, need to be tweaked. So far, we have not received any comments that warrant a substantive change. So things are, a lot of comments revolve around clarification. A lot of things that we can explain the process more, and I think we're looking to accomplish that through the executive summary. The Lehigh Valley Planning Commission letter was very constructive and helpful. They were very supportive of it, made some suggestions of things that we can include in certain sections or things to be aware of for implementation. So it was a very helpful letter, and we're appreciate, appreciative to get those comments. I can read one sentence from there, just to kind of highlight their overall comment. "Overall, the LVPC commends the township for its thoroughly developed draft comprehensive plan and planning process that proactively addresses the township's needs now and into the future." So it, it was deemed consistent. There were 12 commends the township and one applauds the township in the letter, so it was a nice letter to receive.
Well, excellent, Dave, thank you for sharing that with us, and I commend you and staff for all the work that you've done to bring this to fruition for us, so thank you. What is the deadline for public comment? Is there a set date?
Yes, on my notes, thank you. February 13th.
Okay.
The 45 days, we had to do it off of the last of the neighboring municipalities, the last one that was received from certified mails, so 45 days from that date is February 11th, that's a Saturday, so we just close it on that Monday.
A week from Monday is when it will close? Excellent.
Yes.
Very good.
And do we have a target date or BOC meeting that we're looking for final adoption?
Yes, we, we looked at it. The intent is to turn around the comments and catalog, we're currently going through them and cataloging and making tweaks. The intent is to review those at the February Planning Commission meeting and seek a recommendation to move it on to the BOC for the first meeting in March, which I think is March 1st, so. That's the tight headline, if everything works out, but we'll see how comments are evolving, and as of right now, we don't see, we see that as attainable.
Excellent, thank you, Dave. Any other board comments? Any from the public? Okay, moving on to direction and discussion, agenda item 12A, we have Presentation and Dissemination of Annual Reports Prepared by Citizen Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Councils, Recommendation by our Township Manager, Tom Petrichi.
Thank you. So Township Staff and I had reviewed how we are presenting annual, annual reports to the board. So these are reports that are generated by the citizen boards. For example, the Planning Commission and Rec Board, and the Civil Service Commission. So the recommendation is to compile the annual reports into one booklet, to generate a PDF of the booklet, and to place it on the township website, and this will actually increase the availability of the reports to township residents. I think in the past, it was, it was read at a public meeting. This way, we can reach a wider audience. And the availability of the reports would also be announced at a public meeting, so to basically, you, you cover all your bases. So we just want to make sure the board has no issue with that approach. If not, we will compile the reports that were generated this year. I think we have civil service and planning, Park and Rec, we're going to, we're going to come back strong next year. But Planning Commission and Civil Service.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. I greatly appreciate the recommendation or suggestion to place these reports on the township website for the community to have available to them if they'd like to review. It's a wonderful way to highlight the work of our citizen boards, you know, our volunteers who staff the boards for us. Thank you for bringing that to us.
Yeah, and thank you for all the township staff. We, we really did put our heads together to come up with a good way to do this.
Excellent, thank you. Any other board comment?
No, go ahead. Tom, I, I really like this idea, because I sat here and listened to reports that I knew that were developed by staff and presented by someone else. So I think this is a consolidation of efforts, and it makes sense to me. In addition to what Commissioner Kelly said, it's, it's a form to involve all those who may want to be involved, make it available to them as well. Good idea.
Anything else?
I would just say the two words that come to mind are transparent and efficient. Transparent increases the availability for the public and any other entity to review these reports. Efficient, because obviously having staff do that work upfront, having the chairpersons of the committees do that work upfront, reduces the need for them to, to come to a, a BOC meeting and, and use that time. So I appreciate it.
I do agree. That was actually my one comment when I was going through this agenda. I believe that it will increase the visibility and garner some interest by residents. So thank you so much.
Very good. Moving on to Direction and Discussion, Item B, Sanitary Sewer Reduction Plan Update. And it'll be an explanation by Herb Bender, our Director of Operations.
All right, so I wanted to bring this in front of the Board. This is a sewer reduction plan that we have to turn into LCA along with the correction action plan that goes along with Klein's Island. Before I submitted this, I wanted to get the buy-in from the Board of Commissioners first. It is a decent sized amount of money here. It is $3 million almost. We have to basically seal every manhole in the township. Some of them have to be raised up with new tops put on and resealed. The outside will have to be sealed. Some of the inside will have to be done also. But what I did is, we normally budget around $300,000 a year. So I didn't want to blow our budget out of the water where we had no chance of keeping our fund balance where it needed to be also. So I stuck to the $300,000 a year that we were already budgeting. So we have 10 years to get this work done. So that's why I decided to, let's do $300,000 a year. We don't blow the budget out the water and we have the 10 years to do it. We don't have to go into any reserves this year. We have to start in 2023. We're going to start in Basin 56. So we have 160 manholes we have to seal. It's $144,000. We have 10 that we need to raise and seal at $53,000. The other thing is, we're going to do what we have to do. This is to accomplish everything that needs to be done, the $2,793,200. But there are ways that we can potentially lower that number also. We are going to do what we need to do to get our INI portion down. So the first year, yes. Second year, yes, we'll probably use a contractor so we can get some of our guys trained how to do some of this work. Third year, I'm trying to bring a lot of it in-house where we would then reap the benefits of being able to do it cheaper. But I would like to make sure our guys are trained and we're doing it correctly the first time and not having to keep backtracking because we didn't do it right.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb.
Herb, what's this going to do? I mean, I know we have to do it for Klein's Island. But what's it actually raising, raising seal versus seal? What's the overall goal here?
What the overall goal is, is to get every signatory to do this work. If we do this work, it can mean we don't have to parallel our mains, which is millions of dollars, not just 3 million. And then it also will reduce the price of what has to be done at Klein's Island also. So if we can get all 18 signatories to buy in on these plans and do what they're supposed to do, it'll significantly lower the pitcher down at Klein's Island.
So all municipalities, communities involved in dumping into Klein's Island have to do this?
Everyone has to do a SRP program. Now, you can say you're going to do nothing. You can say that. But what that's going to do is you're not going to ever lower your flows. So you're going to end up paying the highest amount in the end.
So even if other municipalities don't do the work, it's not going to harm saw the white halls?
It's going to go off of flows.
Correct. So this is going to be a positive action for our township.
And I did talk to LCA to make sure they were happy with this plan. And it's right in line with what they thought we should have done. So we, for this, they're basically already said, "Thank you for a great plan" to us.
And what is Basin 56? What area are you planning to work on?
Basin 56 is actually our smallest sewer basin. That's down by Shersville, Presidential, all in the low-lying area, which we have our pipe that runs under the creek. So we have some issues there that we got to get addressed. And a lot of our manholes in that area are in swales. So we have to get those up out of the swale. So when rainwater runs over the top, it's not just going through the lid. Which also, if we do this work, can also reduce our costs every year of what we're paying to send the sewage to Klein's Island. Because now we're not going to be paying to send INI rainwater, storm water to the plant to be treated that doesn't need to be treated.
Thank you.
Let Herb, just to clarify, does this mean that you're going, you're starting with Basin 56? You're starting with the basin that needs the most work?
No. Because of being our first year in this, we are going to do Basin 56. One, because it's our area that we're paving in this year also. So we can do this type of work first, then we can pave the roads. And we have sealed everything completely then. From the bottom of the manhole all the way to the top of the manhole will be sealed with all-new asphalt. The ceiling's inside. It's just a way that we're going to try to work it and incorporate it right with the paving.
Okay, thank you. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. When I saw this, Herb, this table here, I'm thinking, oh, man. I've seen a lot of tables that I couldn't really piece this together. So thanks for tying the loose ends, at least in my mind. I know that we talked about in the last, in the last year. Speaking of INI, I know our township has scoping, what I would call scoping equipment, which is, you know, for everyone, you know, is for laterals or even in mains. So this work is independent of that type work that I'm referring to, correct?
Yes, that is correct. This, where we came up with this is LCA has a third party working that's running the model for Klein's Island. That's where we took that data because they had meters in our system, meters downflow of our system, to figure out who had where the INI in each basin was. So now our next step is the manholes, which we know is the inflow problem. So now we're going to take it one step further also this spring when it is raining. Not the nights it is raining, but the day after, we are going to do night wearing, where we're going to actually open the manholes and see from the top manhole to the next one, do we have a lot of water running in, which would be groundwater? So once we can pinpoint those, we can also know if we need to repair pipes or line possibly that whole pipe.
Perfect. So that's where our equipment that we've purchased at fair expense, also designed though to reduce our flows down to Klein's Island, which is ultimately cost.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other board comment? Anything from the public? Herb, thank you for bringing that to us and for educating us on this. It's important work and thank you for all that you do.
Okay, so I just want to, everyone's okay with me turning this report into LCA tomorrow then? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Direction Item C, Stray Animal Service 2023. I'll turn it over to our Township Manager for explanation.
Thank you. So at the last Board of Commissioners meeting, we had discussed the animal control contract for 2023. The township currently contracts with the Sanctuary at Hafsville. The township, as it does from time to time, we evaluated that service and we sought a quote from another entity, the Lehigh Valley Humane Society. I just want to point out, in looking at this process, you know, it's no reflection on the level of service provided. We're merely just doing our due diligence to see what other options are available. So basically, in trying to come up with an apples-to-apples comparison between the two entities, it's very difficult to do that. Their intake hours are different, capacity's different, charges are different. Basically, it's coming down to how the township wants to proceed. But I do want to point out, in the interim time period from the last meeting and now, the township did receive feedback on the lack of a trap neuter and release program originally as proposed by the Humane Society. So what the Humane Society proposed was unlimited dogs and up to 20 stray cats, no trap neuter and release. We did ask the Humane Society to come back with what they would charge for a TNR program and it's $45 a cat. And we said we would start it at 25 cats and then kind of reassess that depending on how the year goes. So we understand that could, that number could change. So basically, the way the township looks at this, the major issues or the major differences, I should say, between Sanctuary and Lehigh Valley Humane Society is the 24-hour access for Humane Society. Sanctuary is 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Humane Society has a larger capacity for dogs, which of course we're required, under the dog law, to ensure that we are handling dogs. And they are giving us, for the $3,500 a year, unlimited dog service. The TNR difference in price is another component. $60 per cat for the Sanctuary and $45 per cat for the Humane Society. So at this point, I wanted to get the feedback from the Board. I believe there may be some comments from those in attendance, I'm not sure. So I want to hear all the comments from the Board and then also comments from representatives in attendance. And then the Board can make an informed decision.
Thank you, Tom, for this update. I just had a question regarding hours. And so that I understand when we do have a stray, do facilities come to the township and pick up the dog? Or how do we transport or do we transport?
Typically, we'll call the Sanctuary and they will come to us during the day, during the hours. If it's after hours, there has been opportunities, we just house the dog overnight and then they come in the morning. Or occasionally, depending on how busy they are, we'll transport there as well. So it's mostly though, they will come to us and get the dogs.
And would the same be true of the Humane Society?
During the day, I believe they would come. At night, we would drive and drop them off. So we wouldn't have to house them overnight, we would take them right there. Correct.
Thank you. Is that what you would do? Is that what you prefer, to take the animal right there?
It's 50/50. Like Tom said, this was just strictly just making sure we're doing our due diligence with our services that we provide. I will speak openly, we've had a very good relationship with the Sanctuary. They've been very good to us and have done a fantastic job. It's just looking at what the options are and what the availability and what's the appetite of the Board because we're spending taxpayer dollars, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. I'm going to start out by saying I did not do personally the job that I normally do in understanding this issue like is to be expected of me by residents and businesses and honestly, me of myself. So being perfectly frank, I saw the contract in front of us last meeting, $3,500, unlimited dogs, 20 cats. And that to me was the level that it rose to. So tonight, I'm going to share with you some additional thinking that I've had and hopefully for discussion. And then I'm going to have a personal conclusion, you know, after we hear discussion. But I want to be upfront with everyone. That's, I saw $3,500 and it didn't rise to the level that I thought that as a commissioner, my duty was. I understand now, it's the topic and it's not the money. This to me is not an economic decision. We're only talking about one, possibly $2,000 a year. So I want to talk about level of service first. What we first got as a draft agreement from the Humane Society was not addressing TNR at all. In fact, in the draft agreement, it said they will not do that. So, you know, giving our staff, Tom specifically, credit. We did go back to the Humane Society and now we have some cost associated with that. I have additional questions. But to me, what I didn't want to do with this topic was reduce the level of service. I don't know the stats. We have some in front of us now, but I came unprepared in the last meeting. I'm a little bit more prepared now. I have some questions, but I wanted to start off by saying that. I do know that the township received a letter from Tanya. I don't know if Tanya's here this evening. Yeah, okay, Tanya. So I want to give you a lot of credit. First of all, we've never met. But you wrote the township, which the whole Board got, very professionally written. And one of the things that struck out to me was, you do not, as the new president of the Hafsville Board, want to get into a bidding war. And I really, really respect that. Because to me, this is less about the cost than it is about what service is being delivered. I still don't know, and I'll go into a little bit of detail, why I don't know exactly the cost comparison. But I'm going to set that aside and give you, Tanya, a lot of credit for the letter that you sent the Board. So thank you for that. It tells me this is one of the vocations, employment. It's not employment, you know. I guess sometimes people do have employees, Sanctuary is volunteer. So in much of what animal control businesses are, are volunteer services. Without volunteers, they wouldn't survive. So these costs are all subsidized by volunteers in respective communities. That's a fact. But anyway, I have, I have a question. And anyone who is, who knows enough to answer, and Tom, you may. But you hear these words, "No Kill Shelter." And I really would like to understand what those words mean. Because as I looked at this draft agreement, and I wish the Humane Society were here, here's a sentence that I highlighted. "LCHS, Lehigh County Humane Society, does not condone nor participate in the euthanasia of these wild, non-adoptable cats." And they're referring to feral cats. And this is what their first proposal was, we don't want anything to do with feral cats. No comment about dogs, no comment about strays, stray cats who are not feral cats. But I wonder what the words mean, "do not condone nor participate in." So what happens to these non-adoptable dogs and cats? They're saying with these language, we don't euthanize them. Do they give them to another place that does euthanize them? I don't know. I would like to know the answer to that. Ultimately, on that particular point, this is where I'm going to end up. I think any agreement that we have with whoever, animal control organization, I would like to have appended to the agreement, the policy statement of that particular organization and how they treat animals when they receive them. I'd like to know what that, what those words are so I can fully understand the service that should not change if it's appended to an agreement during the course of a year. We have no other guarantee that anything else isn't going to change if we don't have that. Despite what you might see on our website, that can always change in a day. I'd also, you know, if Hafsville is, would like to continue in this process, I'd like to see obviously the same information from them as well. But I'm very interested in, what does "no kill shelter" mean? Because these, this sentence here doesn't nail it down for me personally. I understand the reality that sometimes we have stray dogs, stray cats, who, you know, they're not adoptable, if that's a decent phrase, because of their demeanor. They could be dangerous to humans, they could be dangerous to people who work in the shelter. And what do you do? And how long do you hang on to an animal like that? But I know all shelters don't hang on. When I hear about a 97% save rate, is it save rate? That tells me 3% aren't being saved. Now, without knowing the volume of the dogs or cats that they're referring to, I don't, I can't quantify that number. But that tells me and implies, we don't save every animal we get. So that is the question that I have. What is a no-kill shelter? And is there such one? And if so, and I believe there might be at least one at Lehigh Valley, I'd like to understand how they survive. One of the commitments I think that an animal control shelter takes on very seriously is they will do everything that they can. they will do everything that they can to make this animal survive as long as they can. And that's medical treatment, it's food, it's care, and I suppose at some point in time, there's a judgment, you know, that needs to be made, I understand that. But I would also like to understand what the Humane Society considers with this phrase, and I'd like to see it changed, honestly. And I think that the policy that they have should address this specifically. Let me just go to the dollars and cents of this, for now. We got a summary of the cost that Hasfield has charged in South Whitehall, has paid for the last four years, but one of the things that was provided, which stood out to me, as you look at the invoices that were also forwarded to us, and I looked, took a look at them, so I could understand this topic further. So there were apparently 20 cats that were in a motel room, and I'm thinking I'm getting the story right, at the Parkview Inn, 20 cats. So these numbers, it appears to me, just looking at data, are slanted towards an expense that we may inadvertently be deciding, hey, we're going with a less expensive organization, if that's what we do. By one situation, what are we supposed to do with these 20 cats? If they were deemed feral cats by the Humane Society, they wouldn't survive that day or that week. So my point is this, I think there's a lot in this data, what I don't get from this data, though, and Tom, you mentioned this, this is hard to compare apples to apples, but in any agreement, I'd like to see specifically, not, not $3,500 for an unlimited number of dogs, that doesn't even make sense to me. What is the per dog charge in South Whitehall? If we want to, and we need to stay in the animal control business, we're obligated to, at least for dogs, by law, what's the per dog charge? And then we pay it. And by giving a per dog charge, what Hasfield is giving us, we can compare, if we boil this down to economics, then we have a comparison, apples to apples. We don't have that right now. Monica, Commissioner Hodges, you asked a great question, what do we do with these animals during the off-hours? There's a lot of, what I would call the mechanics of, if I walk out my front door and I see this stray animal, what do I do? And what is the fate of that animal? Who takes care of it? Who brings it there? This draft agreement by Humane Society says they're not going after these things. So you either bring these animals to them, or you don't. So we can hear from Hasfield what they do when a stray animal is reported. I'm going to end, and I'm going to say this, I'm not prepared to place a vote for any particular, for either organization this evening, because I would like to see a policy appended to any draft agreement that comes back before this board, and I'd like to see what I would call a true apples-to-apples comparison for dogs, stray cats, and what are called feral cats, or TNR. Thank you for your time.
Any other forward comment?
Commissioner Osborne had said quite a bit there. I did make a note, you brought up early on, which are, both are "no kill," and I have that in parentheses, not knowing specifically what that means, but again, you touched on that. I actually would like to hold my comments, or more of my comments, until I hear, I thought this would be an issue with a lot of discussion, or at least a fair amount, so I wanted to hold my comments until we hear from people. Tanya, I did receive your letter, and I thought it was well-written, and being in most of my life in sales, I liked your comment about bidding. I never did that in my life, and I never would, and I haven't. So I appreciate that, thank you.
So is anyone here from the Humane Society, or shall we give them a chance to come and either speak with us, or give them the information that you're questioning, Commissioner Osborne?
I was going to ask the same question.
Yep. Personally, yes, I would like, to be fair, exactly, to be fair. You know, I will have to say, I've met people from both organizations, we have some correspondence from Martha, who is a South Whitehall resident. So this is, this is, this is not a cold business transaction, we actually know people, I know people in both organizations. To me, it's the topic, and what do we want to do as a township in serving the residents? And that's what it is.
I need to add one point of interest for the board. So we have no contract right now.
Right.
So we had a dog today, and Sanctuary said they will not serve it. We don't have a contract with the Humane Society. So we have, this is a very time-sensitive issue. So I don't know that we have the luxury of devoting a lot of time to this, at this point. I just want to point that out.
I, you know, actually, Tom, thank you, because I considered that, I also looked at the data. January is one, at least historically, it looks like it's one of the less volume requirement. However, we have an opportunity, if we want to take it, to pose this to Hasfield, to temporarily extend this contract at least one meeting until, until we can make a decision. That is something the board will, you know, have to consider, and Hasfield will have to consider as well.
Yes, please.
But we don't even have an agreement that, that is drafted from Humane Society that reflects the $45 TNR cat. We don't have that here.
Yeah, we do, we do have that. I don't know, maybe it didn't make it into the packet, but they did confirm the $45.
Oh, I understand that, and you passed that on, but it's not in the agreement. We don't have an agreement this evening to, that reflects.
No, it should have been, it should have been, and I don't know why it wasn't. I do apologize for that.
Maybe I'm wrong.
It was supposed to be in there.
Okay.
Tom, you bring up an interesting point with having a dog today. I received a dog here from the township. One of the, the issues that could come up, and I guess now you're saying time is of the essence, is there are a lot of people who got dogs over COVID, as we all know that, and there are a lot of people now who are getting rid of those dogs. Either they're going back to work, and, I mean, people are even leaving at airports, as we've all heard, which is a sad situation, unfortunately, but, so, could, Tanya is here, could you just address, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but what Commissioner Osborne, and maybe other commissioners know or don't know, what no kill, I mean, what does that actually mean? I know, I know the words, but, you know, do, do sanctuaries, and I, maybe, dog facilities, send them off?
Come up to the microphone, please, and there's a little button to turn, and the light will turn green, right there on the bottom. There, if you just give us your name.
Good evening, my name is Liz Jones. I'm not sure very many of you know me. I think I've lasted multiple police, chief of police, and township, and commissioners, and I'm still around. I first appeared in front of you 25 years ago, on an animal issue, okay? During that, my last 25 years, I have started four animal organizations, Forgotten Felines and Fidos, Esable Kingdom, the Sanctuary at Hasfield, and now my last and final effort is PA Caring Hearts, which is primarily for senior animals, since I myself am a senior. For what it's worth, a little background, before I started doing this, I just happened to go down to Philadelphia and get an MBA from the Wharton School of Business. So when I appear in front of boards like you, yes, I'm a little old lady in sandals, but I also have a business background. And so I've always approached as a business background. So a little history in animal control, is many years ago, animal control was just like, yeah, you catch a dog, and you take it to Lehigh County Humane Society, or they come get it, and that's it. And then, as you have correctly pointed out, we got in the dog laws, and now you had to do the dogs. So 13 years ago, I stood in front of 20 municipalities in Lehigh County, to talk to them about what they could really do for animal control. Could we go beyond the, say, okay, it's the dogs? Could we include cats, friendly cats, and could we include, the stray cats? And could we include this TNR? Now, 13 years ago, when I asked if anybody knew what TNR was, they all looked at me like I was speaking Greek. Now I think you all know what it means. It's a method to try and keep the number of feral cats down to a minimum. Stray cats, feral cats especially, they're like unemployment. You are always going to have some unemployment, and you are always going to have some stray cats. Your goal is to minimize both of them, right? And that's what we try and do. So I presented to the townships, to the municipalities, an option for them to progress beyond just the stray dogs, look at the friendly stray cats and the TNRs, to show them what could be done. And that's what we started doing. And I'm going to tell you that South Whitehall, if it wasn't the first, it was one of the very first that jumped on the bandwagon and said, "We can do that." Even Dale Daubert, who accused me, who said, "There's no strays now in South Whitehall." And I pointed it, and I said, "See that cat sitting in your window?" And there was literally a stray cat sitting in the window. He accused me of planting it, and I said, "Oh, would have been a great idea." So I've been in front of you guys many times, not you particularly, but been up here. You ask a question, what is a no kill shelter? No kill is really a misnomer for most people. No kill does not mean zero animals euthanized. There is no such thing, nowhere. You have some animals that come in that are too sick to save, too injured, and you have some animals, and most shelters do this, very, very rare exception, if you have an animal come in, especially a dog, and it is truly a danger, you have no choice but to let it go in peace, because there is no safe place to keep these dangerous dogs. Some of them were born that way, some were created by abuse. We have one shelter in the valley, it will not be named, they keep every dog, no matter what, and they have had some of their volunteers and employees ripped up badly by those dangerous dogs. So when you go into this business, what you really want to focus on is not the name "no kill," you want to focus on the name "humane." What can we do to be most humane for the animals? And that's what 13 years ago, Lehigh County started doing. They started being humane at a very reasonable cost. Humane meant get those dogs in, a lot of dogs you get, I know, they go into your cages, and the owners are looking for them frantically. I've been into, going to pick up animals from you, because I used to do, I did animal control myself, 24/7, for seven years, and more than once, I went to the cages, there was no dog there, and I'd go, "Come on, where are they?" And they'd say, "Oh, he's in the cell." They had him inside, because it was too cold outside, or it was too hot outside, you know? So you guys are blessed with having some cages that the animals can come to, they can be contained, they can be safe, with the goal of returning them to their owners before they ever have to go to any shelter. And you've, you know, I've spent many a day, many afternoons, sitting down there, talking to dogs, and talking to the cops, and they're always happy, and they're always friendly, and they've always done their job. No kill is, is a misnomer, you want to focus on what is humane. And if you want to, if you really want to ask, and I am not with the sanctuary right now, okay? I am with my PA Caring Hearts, I'm plugging that a little, okay? Ask them how many animals they took in last year, and what happened to them. Don't ask them for a save rate, ask them how many they took in, and what was the disposition of those animals. And that's where you're going to get a feel for what really happens to the animals. Okay? So I don't know how much longer I'm going to be appearing in front of organizations like you. I really want you to think about, and something Brad said is, the most important thing here, because we're not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, we're talking 6,500, maybe it used to be. One thing I did note is, back in 2018, you were at 6,700. Do you know why you were at 6,700 in 2018? Because two years before that, you had left the TNR program. You had gone to a different organization that will remain nameless, and you had come back to the sanctuary. And all of a sudden, you had to do 100 TNRs to make up for the years that you didn't do it. Just think about it. One mom, two liters of饲 a year, that's eight additional cats from every, so every animal you don't TNR one year, you can have nine reproducing the next year, of conservatively five of half of males, and five of females.
One question for you. When these trap neuter and releases, how do you know they're from South Whitehall? There's no way to rectify if someone, where this cat came from?
Well, when the animals come in, and you're billed, and, correct me if I'm wrong, you're given the address of where that animal came from. People have to now provide their license that says, "Here, this is where I live." I was asked the question, why sometimes you get a lot of animals from one particular address? Well, you got a neighborhood. There may be 15 homes in the neighborhood. How many people care enough to take the effort to get a trap, to feed the cats, to trap them, to get them neutered? What you usually find is, they'll say, "Excuse me, one or two women." And so you end up with a lot of cats from a neighborhood, coming from one address, even though they don't live right at that address. But they set that trap out, and the telephone goes out that says, "Yo, free food in the trap, and it's canned." And the cats will come from great distances.
You just said it, though, great distances.
Great, from down the block, they're not going to come from 20 miles. Doesn't sound that, you know, how do they, you know that they're from? Well, I guess you have to face it, the person who stands in front of, holding the cat with the license.
But here's a scenario, and I'm not saying we're doing it, I'm not saying anyone's doing it here. One of your friends bring you a cat, right? Get this trap neutered and released for me.
I can't say that there's not.
That's what I'm saying, there has to be a way that you can, you can track this, there's no way to track this.
In 2018, there were 100 cats done. And I know that because we were taking them to No Nonsense Neutering, and she can verify that. 100 cats came from South Whitehall. Last year, you had 30. Significant difference, don't you think? 100 down to 30? So even if somebody's sneaking in a cat here or there, they're not sneaking in hundreds, they're sneaking in maybe one or two. I don't see them sneaking in a huge amount of money, you know, a huge amount of animals. Up there, at 2022, was 5,500, which is down from the 67. So it's heading in the right direction, but you're never going to have zero up there.
Liz, can I interject for a second? Herb, I understand your question, and how could you not have that question? Because I asked that question. But to me, I came to the conclusion, two things. One is, if you look at the invoices, I will say an address, because it's on an invoice, it's public record. It's on Cedar Brook Road, South Cedar Brook Road. You look at the invoices, and there's at least 10 in the same quarter from that address. But we could ask the same question about any organization who takes animals. It's not specific to Hasfield, but I think when we find a trend like that, personally, I'd dig into it sooner. I'd go back, perhaps, to the organizations, say, "Hey, what do you know about this particular address and what's happening?" Or you go out and take a look yourself, but.
Please come to the microphone, so that those people that are on virtually will be able to hear your question.
What I'm trying to say, Herb, is I agree with you, and it's a cost control thing, although, you know, even at that, we're not talking a lot of money, but, but still, being respectful of taxpayers' dollars, yeah.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Martha Khan. I live at 3622 Sturridge Place. My husband and I have been residents here since 1979. At full disclosure, I have been a trap neuter return volunteer since the mid-2000s. And I was doing it before anybody was paying to fix these cats. It was coming out of my own pocket. I trapped all over the greater Lehigh Valley doing this, and certainly living here in South Whitehall, I was doing it in my own community. And in full disclosure, I am the president of No Nonsense Neutering. We are a 501(c)(3) located on the east side of Allentown. We're celebrating our 15th anniversary. We have done over 175,000 cats and dogs since we have been in business, and half of those have been feral cats throughout our region. It's a region, we also have Berks County, and we're up in Wilkes-Barre. So I want to start by saying, I'm a taxpayer, and I am thoroughly impressed, I apologize, I don't come to these meetings very often, but I do go to municipal meetings, I've been in Tom's municipality before he came here, and I'm always impressed by what you folks do for us. You're dealing with very complicated issues, and so sometimes, when it gets down to animal control, it's kind of like... And so sometimes when it gets down to animal control, it's kind of like it's cats and dogs. But it's a very important part of the municipality I choose to live in. I want a comprehensive animal control package for my neighbors and for myself. And we have had that, in my opinion, since Liz and the sanctuary presented South Whitehall with options for animal control. And those have been no caps on dogs, no caps on cats. And we're talking about two kinds of cats here now. The cats that come in that are adoptable are ones that used to sit on our sofa, but got out the door, got lost, and they're coming up to somebody's house. And these people are going, "What am I going to do with this cat?" It's adoptable. It needs to go back to a shelter where it can get a home. Okay? That's a stray cat. And I don't want to see a cap on that for one reason. Because we're talking about feral cats that are having all these kittens. We have folks that are taking, I looked at the statistics, the last six months that you were billed, and most of the cats on there, it didn't say cat, it said kitten. So what are we going to do when somebody finds a litter of kitten under their shed, their deck, and a wood pile? We're going to say, "Oops, we only are going to take 20 cats." What happens with that litter of kittens that comes in? And they're from South Whitehall, and we're going to say, "We've hit our limit, I'm sorry." That has not happened at the sanctuary in Hoffsville. So if we want to put apples to apples, as Brad said, then we should be giving the same sorts of types of service. So I'm here as a taxpayer saying, no limits on cats for that very reason. We don't know how many litters of kittens that are going to be in. And yet that's exactly what the sanctuary has been doing for us. I believe, and I'm grateful, that South Whitehall has understood the importance of Trap Neuter Return. I believe that over time, it has stabilized our cat population. And that is the goal. And the other goal is they're getting a rabies vaccine. That is public safety. So that is critical for us as a community. I want to address your issue, being a cat trapper. Typically, most of us that are helping someone who is, as they're feeding the cats, typically, there's not just a cat. Because that mother cat's already had a litter of two, so she's created her own colony. So most of the people that we're working with and trying to help are not just doing one cat. And in a neighborhood, there's typically a person or two that are feeding them because they feel sorry for them. And that's how we work with them. So you may have an entire neighborhood that may have several cats, and there's really one or two people who are feeding the cats. That's where we go to trap. We don't drive down the street, put a trap down. We're working where the cats are living and eating. So typically, you're going to see them coming out of there. I just want to tell you, my first trapping job was Person Stables. That's how long I've been around. We used to find dead cats in the middle of Walbert Avenue in front of the stables. And when they sold their land to Cedar Crest Plaza, I was just starting out in my venture here as a volunteer. And I believe there were around 60 cats in that barn. And we did the best to remove as many as we could to other farms, and we took out the friendlies. I have trapped probably in every square mile of South Whitehall Township. I have done Alpo pet foods behind supermarkets, restaurants, every residential neighborhood there is. Monica, we live in the same neighborhood. You had a neighbor right up the street from you that just took a mother and two kittens to the sanctuary. And I just trapped a feral cat, one of your neighbors, the Ritters, over on Walbert Avenue behind the tennis courts. So we have cats in our neighborhoods. They're not going to go away. So I don't want to see our services diminished in any way. I don't believe that the, we know unit price, we know with the sanctuary, and I appreciate what you said, Brad. For us to really make a decision, I have a relationship with the sanctuary. I really don't care which organization you choose, as long as we are getting the same level of service. And we can only determine that by knowing the unit cost for a dog intake. I do not want to see our cats capped, so I would like to know what we're going to pay. And as Tom and I have had a relationship in Plainfield Township, some of the municipalities we contract with directly in North Hampton County do limit their TNR numbers of cats. And what they do for accountability is they use a voucher system. You have to come to the township, show that you live here, to get the voucher to present to either No Nonsense Neutering or if you go with Lehigh County Humane Society, they have a TNR clinic. So that, again, there's more accountability there. Again, I don't have an issue. I just want that our level of animal control to remain the same. Robust and comprehensive. I have a question for you, Chief, if I may. I understand from reading on the website that you do hold dogs?
We do. We will. For what we do is, if we get a dog, we'll hold it here, we'll contact you. But we have a microchip scanner.
You do?
We do. We've had one for, since I've been here. We got one my first year here. We scan the dog. If we find out where the owner is, we contact them directly. So there's many times that we have dogs that we don't even have to call you.
That was my question, because we were going to donate a microchip scanner if you didn't have one.
Yeah, the officers, when they get a dog, they scan every dog. Yes, absolutely.
So, thank you. And that's the way it should be done. The only other suggestion I would have is that I found it very difficult to find animal control services when I went to our website. Because I looked at it as a service. So I went to the services button, and there was nothing there. So then I went up to do the search, and I put in animal control and again, saw nothing but animal and the ordinances. So I would like to suggest that it wasn't at the police department under, when I lost my pet, what do I do, about six questions down? I would just suggest that for whom, whatever, make it easy for us. A lot of people do not know how to find the service. And it would be helpful if you also have information in there about the Trap Neuter Return program. Because a lot of people, I don't think, know that. And how are they going to find it out? We're talking about updating websites and making information easy. I would appreciate it if you would consider doing that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Martha, I have a couple of questions. You have an organization, No Nonsense Neutering.
Yes.
Okay. So you actually, this is a question, I know the answer, but it's a question. You accept cats from different animal shelters, and you arrange for those cats, if necessary, to be neutered or spayed. Is that right?
Okay, so we do pets. People make appointments and come to us.
Yes.
We work with the rescues. So the way the ferals work is, is that yes, if somebody lives somewhere and they have a cat, this happens every day. They make an appointment with us. They have to have an appointment. They come to us. We fix it. We left ear tip it. We vaccinate it. We parasite treat it. And they go back home with it in a trap. We also contract with municipalities. We have a relationship with the sanctuary, and we contract with several other municipalities throughout the Lehigh Valley. And again, it's usually through a voucher system, so there's accountability. People make an appointment through that municipality. They go pick up a voucher. They bring it to our facility to be neutered. It is same day.
You mentioned the word rabies, and I'm thinking about this whole topic. And that's one of the things that I, you know, I'm a layperson. So I'm thinking, okay, we just neutered this cat or spayed the cat. But the cat could actually be rabid. Do you, as part of TNR program, do you give them a rabies shot?
Absolutely. Nothing, nothing, nothing leaves our surgery clinic.
That's what I thought I heard. I didn't.
If it's a pet or feral. Our philosophy is this is a health issue. And so if an owner comes and they cannot prove that this animal has been vaccinated, it gets one before it leaves. Feral cats, it's part of our package. It is a duty that we have. Now, in our existence of 15 years, we've only had two that have come into our clinic that our veterinarians have actually felt might be rabid. And so we have to have permission from the person who brought it in because the only way that we can actually determine that is by sending its head to Harrisburg for testing. That means euthanizing the animal. We've only had that happen twice.
One of the other things I thought or heard you say, well, that's very interesting. Thank you. I wasn't aware of that. It's just called TNR. It's not TNR.
Trap, neuter, return.
Return. I don't see rabies in there.
Yes. Trap, neuter, vaccinate, return.
I think you also said, and obviously, this is, needs to be confirmed if you did say it, that the Humane Society also has a TNR, would you call it?
It's a surgery clinic. It's a feral clinic. Yes.
So my question to the Humane Society would be, if you have that clinic, why in this draft contract you say you don't want TNR cats? If you have the clinic right there.
Correct.
Okay, but that's not.
That's what I'm saying. They can give you the same service. They can. In fact, they got into this when they got their new director, Hal Warner, started in 2018. And it was great for us because we can only do so much.
Right.
Okay? And so it was wonderful having them involved in it as well. So yes, they do, can offer you that service.
And that's not, that's not a question for you, but it's, you know, when I heard you say rabies, I'm.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. So Tom, at this, did you have a comment?
No, I just want to, in summation, thanks for your time. Thanks for listening.
One thing that's always impressed me about South Whitehall is your very forward thinking. So I said, 13 years ago, you led the charge to get started with TNR, whatever that was. You took our word. It was effective. It has been effective. 2018, 100 animals TNRed. Last year, 30 TNRed. So I really, really would hope you consider, whichever group you go with, making sure that you still provide the services that I think your residents have come to expect from South Whitehall. Do you understand about the concept of no-kill? That was a marketing ploy, pure and simple. 25 years ago, no-kill conferences rose up around the country to say, "We're going to keep every animal we get in." It doesn't, it's not reality. It's not, okay? That's just a title that's slapped on. That's really not accurate. Any questions? Comments?
My only comment is, the information that both of you provided has been incredibly beneficial. And I thank you for your advocacy and for what you guys do to look out for the well-being of the community as a whole, because that's what it's really about. So I think I can speak for, I don't want to speak for my fellow board members, but this is, will play a major role in our decision-making process. And thank you for just making us aware of the issues and also, and also what you do.
When were the line on your agenda took so much time?
It was, and it was actually, it was from an educational perspective. It was very interesting to hear. So thank you for coming before us. And if you feel it's ever important to educate us on these issues, whether it's South Whitehall specific, whether it's specific to the work you do, feel free to come back anytime.
Well, see, I know the township managers get together and they talk, okay? And so I want this one saying, "Hey, it's really important that you keep doing TNR, okay? And that we help those stray cats because we don't want the numbers going back up, folks." So there you go. Nudge, nudge. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ma'am, if you'd just come up to the microphone. Just give us your name.
My name is Marjo Heimbach, and I am Board Secretary at the Sanctuary at Hoffsville. I wanted to let you know that we are here and we're very interested in South Whitehall Township. And we want to thank you for contracting us to handle your animal control the past several years. It's been our pleasure to work with everyone and with the township residents and your animals. And I wanted to give you some information because I don't, I do the billing for your contract. And I have some figures that don't exactly match what you have there, and I wanted to give them to you. And I believe that everyone received a copy of the last 10 invoices, but they don't add up to the amounts on the screen. So I wanted to give you some revised totals for your consideration. And we have all that paperwork. And the year 2020, your animal control costs were $4,990. In 2021, $5,390. And in 2022, $5,555. Last year, we took in 14 stray dogs. We had 50 cats as shelter intakes and 15 TNRs. It's always our pleasure to first reunite those animals with their owners whenever possible. But for the ones who were not able to, they're housed at the shelter. They're fed. They're provided with medical care. Sometimes extensive medical care. Our board just voted last night, we all received an email, for extraordinary medical care for a cat. So that was approved. It was a high amount of money. We value the lives of these animals above all else. We don't shy away from those who are injured and need care unless they're suffering. As Liz would say, that's a different matter to us. But if they are not adopted, they will stay with us, and eight months from now, you can go find a cat that we found in South Whitehall that will be in our shelter. And we can tell you where they all are. So they're safe and secure with us. We don't put a cap on them. We're not going to turn them away. At times, we do have a waiting list when we become overcrowded, but they're always welcomed and well-taken care of. So I just want to reassure you that your animals are in good care when you entrust them to us. So if anyone had any questions, they answered a lot of the things that I wanted to talk about. We're just a resource there for you when you need us.
Thank you. No question. Thank you very much, Marjo. At this point, Tom, you've certainly heard an awful lot of information from the individuals and comments from the board. Do you need any further direction from us?
I do. If the board wants to have this go to another meeting, I don't, I don't think that that's a good course of action at this point. I think if you could give staff the leeway to figure this out and come up with a decision, that would be greatly appreciated.
I would certainly trust your judgment with yourself and staff, given all of the information and knowing how much you all care for the township and our residents. I fully would support you gathering information and making a decision on this.
Yeah, and I think, I think anything we do, we probably just need to implement a voucher program. And if the township wants to keep the same level of service, you know, hearing everything tonight, I don't think there's any wrong decision with keeping the sanctuary in place. You know it's a known quantity. I think we could just simply do that and keep, implement a voucher program at the same time. I think that way, we have some level of comfort in terms of how we're issuing the vouchers and where it's going, and we have control. And then we know it's a known quantity. I kind of gather there might be some hesitation when making a switch. So I think, you know, knowing that we definitely, we need to have someone under contract. And there's not a lot of entities to utilize. The voucher program with the sanctuary, I think, would be a good course of action.
Sounds good, Tom.
I think if you review the information and you are still, arrive at that conclusion, I think that would be a great, a great option.
I concur with the Commissioners Kelly and Roth.
Tom, my, to be consistent, first of all, I'm comfortable, you've heard the discussion. And you may have actually more facts than we have. But I'm still concerned about the policy. So in some way, I'm not directing you to do this, but it's certainly a strong desire of mine. I would like to have the policy, if this case, if you go with Hasfield, in writing and as part of the agreement, so that, so that's part of the agreement. We know exactly by policy what's happening with these cats. And it's not going to change mid-year or at the end of the year. So be consistent, I'm just trying to be consistent with what I saw as a serious question in the draft agreement for the other organization.
Understood.
Very good.
I do have one question, if I could ask someone from the sanctuary. Do you work with rescues?
We take owner surrenders. We receive animals from other shelters that are overcrowded. Some of them do come from the south. The south, for some reason, seems to have more kill shelters than we do in this area. We take animals, we actually pull some of our animals out of Philadelphia. Animals that are in danger, possibly not making it if the shelters get overcrowded. We take in the friendly cats. Were you more interested in dogs or cats? Were you more interested in dogs or cats with your question?
No, my, my question was just general, do you work with breed-specific rescues?
Oh, breed-specific.
That's what I mean. Like if you have a Newfoundland, will you work with a Newfoundland rescue? A collie, collie rescue? Do you work with rescues? Or do you prefer to just adopt them out on your own? A rescue-friendly are you?
We generally adopt them out on our own, and we, we have sometimes people who express an interest in a certain kind of dog, and we really love to match them up with that if we can. So we can keep some lists and like, for some reason, a lot of people like French Bulldogs, so we know if there's people who are looking for those. Yeah. Oftentimes, people, when they lose a pet, they try and replace it with the same kind of breed. They become breed-specific. And that even really goes for cats. When people call and they say, I want a gray cat, because I had the most wonderful gray cat. And they're all wonderful.
Hi, I'm Smarjassy. I'm the board president of the Sanctuary. But I just wanted to interject a little bit. So with any dogs that are a little bit more breed-specific, we do try to adopt them out on our own. However, if we do have a dog that's a little bit more difficult to be adopted, we do reach out to these breed-specific rescues to see, you know, if they can help us. So it's not a, you know, end-all, be-all. We do try to work, because we want to try to find a home for all these animals.
Right, I ask, because not all shelters are, are rescue-friendly. They choose to adopt them out on their own. And I just wanted to learn more about what you do. Do you, are you willing to work with breed rescues? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item D, Bureau of Justice Assistant Small, Rural, and Tribal BWC Grant Program. And I'll ask our Township Police Department Chief, Glenn Dorni, to present.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just here to inform you that there is a grant opportunity out there for the Small, Rural, Tribal Body-Worn Camera Program through the DOJ, and it is a matching grant. So with permission to move forward, I know we've, we've kind of, we've got some other irons in the fire for that position with body cameras. We're still waiting for a potential grant, what's left from a previous grant that we applied for, March 8th, I believe, is the next round that they're going to grant out. But this would be an opportunity to get approximately up to $2,000 per camera for a total of about $100,000, and it would be a matching grant as well. And I know we are in the, we've had the discussion about the, the issues we're facing in the future with the discontinuation of the WatchGuard brand and not being supported by Motorola anymore in the near future. And that is something that we've been investigating, different methods and opportunities for body cameras. So this, if it were to come through, we'd probably be in a better position to know where we're at, and it would give us an opportunity to at least save another $100,000 on a grant process. So.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you, Chief. Any board discussion on this item? Anything from the public? Anyway, then we don't need a vote?
No, I don't, not a vote. What I would do is, if, if we're in the interest of moving forward with this, I will actually assign newly-promoted Lieutenant Dottor to start working on that grant to submit. It's due on the 17th of February, so we have the next meeting on the 15th. So I would probably be in front of you on the 15th requesting a resolution to apply for that. Just wanted to make sure that we're, before we put all the work and energy into it, that we were definitely on board with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item E, Motion to Authorize Township Manager to Execute Improvement Security Release Certification for Longswater Technology, 1567 Hausmann Road. I'll ask Tom Petrucci to present.
Thank you. I just want to preface this discussion, first of all, to state that we, as a township, will be endeavoring to bring these releases to your attention going forward. But this is the first one you've probably seen as a board, and maybe the first one that's been brought to the board in quite some time.
Quite some time.
Decades, right, Greg?
Yes, decades.
Okay. So basically, this is, this, this particular one pretty much seems to be a perfunctory type request in the total amount of $184,019.95. Unless there's any questions, and if there are questions, I would direct them to the Township Engineer, who prepared the recommendation to release the security. But if there are no questions, if the board's inclined, we would take a, I would ask for a motion to authorize me to sign the release of security.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. Questions from the board on this motion to authorize? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, courtesy of the floor, it's opportunity for the public to address the board for any non-agenda items, or if you come up to the microphone and just give us your name and address.
I waited to the second one because of the crowd at the beginning. Courtesy of the police, they're, you know, they're president. Brian Height, 1273 Eck Road. My comments are basically two questions, and they both have to do with Eck Road, where I live. When are the lines going to be painted on Eck Road? That's the first question. The second one is, why was the speed limit sign removed just north of my property on the southbound lane? Those are two questions I have. The reason why I bring up the line painting is I was told, can't do it in the winter. Seems plausible, until I drove on Huckleberry Road under the Pennsylvania Turnpike. All the lines are painted. It was done in the middle of the winter. So, and I don't know why they would remove the speed limit sign. Speed limit, curve sign, no parking sign, took it out, threw it in the back of a truck, drove away.
Do you know who took the sign down, Brian?
On the advice of a legal counsel, I'm not allowed, well, I'm not allowed to take photos or videos of construction workers or anything in the right of way, under the threat of being arrested and charged with harassment. So I am sticking to my script. I have a priority.
And just so you are aware, I am working with Ray Wright on a full schedule, so we can try to get this stuff resolved. We just had a walkthrough with Pickcock and him the other day, so they have a punch list of items that have to be done, and I have requested a hard schedule with them, so we know dates that this stuff will be completed.
I've heard that before, and I appreciate all that you've done with these entities. And that reminds me, was there any follow-up to, if we're done with this subject? I appreciate that, and I'm sure you'll be in touch with me. At the last meeting, there was conversations about truck turn movements. James Murray from Aries Management had said that he would reach out to his tenant and copy the township. Was that done?
Literally, the timing is, is important, because literally, we just received notification that he is going to be notifying his tenants today. So.
It took them two weeks to?
Well, I think he put together, you know, he wanted to make sure it was done in the right way. I'm not trying to.
No, no.
I'm just, he gave us, he did, gave Dave and I the opportunity to review the route, how it would be impacted, which is appreciated. So that notice should be going out very soon to, to the tenants.
Yeah, because the tenant that's the one in question, they're the ones that are driving crazy, using 20 feet when the line should be painted for a 12-foot lane and an eight-foot shoulder. They're coming down my road, where the speed limit sign used to be, now it's gone, and they're just flying at 6:30. So if you wanted some revenue between 6:00 and 6:30.
We don't want revenue, we want safety. So, but I will absolutely make sure that everybody's aware of that.
The word got out when the chief and, I forget the sergeant's name, but.
When Edelhizer, maybe?
No, it was, anyway, they were literally sitting in my driveway pulling over cars, and he even said to me, he goes, I'm in a marked car, and they're still driving by me. They don't care. So then they did enforcement, they did speed board. The sign I'm talking about, where the speed board was hanging, that's the sign that's, like, the post and everything is gone. So I, it was literally two days after that last meeting, so it was that Friday. No, no, that's where they used to hang the speed board.
Yeah, we used to put the speed board there, but now the, the board's not there, but the sign was there, and now they took the whole post and sign, apparently.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Yeah. And we all, we are, Dave and I, going to receive input from Jim as to whether this is well-received by the tenants. So once that, once that's sent out, it's one thing to send it out, it's one thing another to have it actually be practiced.
Right.
So it's important for us to get that information.
I think once the FedEx drivers get aware of it, that it, you know, that there's another route, they would probably use that, because I've seen tractor trailers going north on Eck, making the right onto eastbound Chapman's, and literally, you could see the skid marks on the road where people are just, there's a reason why that's scheduled for improvements. So anything they do, but.
Yeah, this is only a temporary measure. The permanent measure is, is also underway.
Right. I understand that, yeah. But my concern is for the safety of my family, and I'll drop it at that. And getting to the animal TNR, before the warehouses, there was a bunch of residence houses, and when they took down the old farmhouse that was abandoned for 15 years, there was cats everywhere. I trapped eight of them myself for TNR. So imagine those eight multiplying times five, then you'd have 40 cats. So the cap is a little, I paid for that myself, but my neighbor up the road with the junkyard, he has five cats. Now, he, he Nared them, but they never left his house, and now they're, the mom's not domesticated, but the kittens that were, that were TNR'd are now living in his house, and now he's got four cats. At least they're fixed, and, you know, he's taking care of them. But that's, that's the kind of thing that can happen, and it can sprawl really quickly. So take that for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Brian. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Anyone online? Dave? No comments? Okay, very good. Moving on, I need a motion to authorize payment of invoices and dispersments.
So.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session this evening. I need a motion for adjournment.[1792.33]